It is seven o'clock. Let's call the regular zoning commission meeting for March 1st to order. And the first order of business is appointing of alternates if necessary. We've got, is Donna here? Don't see Donna.
No Donna.
No Donna. And Diane, you're the only alternate, so we will point you to serve for Donna, okay?
Sure.
All right. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes. There is a Rev 2 that was put on the Dropbox this afternoon late that corrected a few typos. So anybody have any other comments?
Actually, I read this late in the afternoon and it looked fine to me, so I don't have any suggestions.
Anybody else? You have a motion to approve?
I'm moved that we approve the minutes as they are drafted.
Second.
Second by Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, six, nothing, and no abstentions. I see, okay. Six, nothing with no abstentions. Okay, the next thing is an application of the Fire District. We have no public hearing or continuation of such. So I think we need to have Kevin explain what they're gonna do. Are you the guy to explain, Kevin?
Yep, I'll be explaining tonight. We have, again, Chief Waldes this year, Chief Kelly, who's our training chief, who's also on board here on the meeting. And first, I want to thank everyone for this opportunity to be on this process. And I want to thank Michael and Laura, who have helped us guide us through this, so we do this correctly. That's probably the most important thing, because we certainly do need this facility. And we're hoping for a pretty positive outcome. Having said that, what we're looking at basically is a townhouse that we're building. As we all know, we have probably in excess of 1,400 units that have built. Many of have been townhouses, unsprinkled, that we have the challenge of taking care of. We've worked on it pretty well, during the code process, things of that nature. But certainly it gives the Fire Department a challenge, because a lot of them are single exits. So it requires us to facilitate laddering, high distances off the normal drive area. So it's all hand-thrown ladders, to the point where we had to purchase an additional ladder truck. And that'll be delivered sometime in June, we anticipate. So with extra reserve ladders for this. So along with that, we need to practice. We found that our existing burn program and training program is quite extensive. And it's excellent for our firefighters, and it's made our firefighters who they are today. And this built, the old building, is really doing its job. The downside of it is, it doesn't have the same format as the units that were built over the last four years. So that's the reason why we tried to squeeze in the probably the smallest building that we could. It's 20 by 30, with an eight-foot fire escape on the end. As you can see, I'm sorry, it's a sketch. It's right on the edge of the existing pavement that we have there to the west. And 60 feet from the other building, which will replicate essentially a driveway and two offsets, just like we do have in some of the buildings through the development. So we can operate with ladder trucks and respond in with other apparatus. On the backside, it's all gonna be ladder work. We can work off the back. We also have a chimney for this, so that we can reduce our burning area. And we have like, it's a new design for providing smoke in the rooms without actually having fires. So that's a new technology that's working, that Chief Kelly is working on that project, which is very well received. Additionally, we have to have a garage, because most of these now have garages underneath these two stories of living space. So we are gonna have a garage on one end. And these will have special burn areas, that is a ceramic base or ceramic tile. That's inserted, it's consistent with what we have in the other building that is maintainable. Again, it's a garage on the first level. And then above, we'll have two, quote, "living" levels above that, and then an attic space. That is the basics of the building. We're gonna have open porches on the old training side, facing the old driveway, so that we can use the laddering to those porches. And we also can teach our folks on rappelling with ropes and other operations that we do perform. So it's gonna be multifaceted building. It'll be improved. The intent is to build it out of block, consistent with the existing building, with a brick facade, so that it will look a little bit better than what a normal burn building would look like. It's pretty consistent with using the same standard wood trim up on top on the roof structure. It'll be, we believe it'll be just asphalt roof. And the windows themselves will have framed out, but they'll probably be metal. We found that when we went to the architect with our first burn building, we asked for eight different types of windows. And we wanted them all to be framed out and to accommodate the looks. And after about the second or third week of training in it, we only had half windows. So we certainly have to look at the realistic approach on this and facilitate putting in the metal hatches on them. And we'll set it back. This will, that's for the building. And again, you'll see on the lined-out area with the new pavement, it'll be hooked up to our existing concrete drafting tank. And then to the rear of that is our second project, pretty much, and that's the VFW burn area. And what that is, is essentially a burn area made out of brick pavers. We're hoping to get some fencing around it. Again, this is all a pro bono job with the VFW. So we're gathering materials with a fireplace in there, potentially propane-fed, to assist with the burning of hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of flags each year. So we're trying to get that done, hopefully for the spring, for June Flag Day, to get that, so they can start burning. I'll entertain any questions you have on the project.
Kevin, let me just point out, as someone who works with the VFW on our Memorial Day flags, we put out 1,400 flags every Memorial Day in Simsbury, the little ones. And this is gonna be a much more convenient way to dispose of them than what we've been doing. And in addition, people have flags at their homes they want to dispose of during the year. So I say bravo, we need it.
Yeah, it's actually a more honorable way, too.
Oh, sure, yeah.
You know? Is there any, I'm sorry?
Any other comments?
Yeah, this is Kevin, the other Kevin. So do you guys have underground propane? Is that how you feed the buildings for fire?
No, actually, we use Class A material right now. We use hay. We do not burn propane in the buildings. The only propane training that we have there is the car. We have a car that's there, so we don't, we stopped burning real cars a couple of years ago, because of the, you know, the environmental impact for those. So we ended up getting the propane car on site. Right now, we don't anticipate, because it's a huge expense. It's probably $100,000 for a propane system in the building itself. So at this point in time, while it could be in the future, at this point in time, we're gonna use the same thing as what we use in the old building, and that is very small restricted spaces that is lined with a ceramic tile, that we have a very small, it's almost like a 55-gallon drum size, cut in half, but it's more sophisticated than that, because it has to reflect the heat, so it doesn't damage the ceilings. So, and we maybe put two pallets in there with probably a quarter bale of hay. And that works with probably six or seven fires with perhaps four or five evolutions for our firefighters.
Okay, so where will like propane for the flag burning facility?
That, right now, we have at our disposal, at least we hope so, a portable line that was being used on a job in town. And the propane tank is actually on the side of the garage that we have there. And we can run it above ground for the time period that we are gonna be burning, and then just roll it up at the end of the, at the end of the process. It'll only be a day process. But we're not gonna put a propane tank underground. I mean, worst-case scenario, we'd put a tank nearby there. I mean, that would be good. But we have this line that's available to us, and it was used on a construction site.
Okay, I thought maybe it had something underground and you were piping it between the buildings.
No. No.
And you do this once a year, is that it, Kevin?
The flag burning?
Yeah.
The flag burning, they anticipated, may even be done a couple times a year.
Yeah.
Okay, not every week.
No, 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 no.
In the Google aerial view of the site, there are stripes along the right side. Looks like it's a football field or something.
Oh, it is, yeah. Yeah, the town has a football field that we agreed that they could put some of it on the Fire District property, because they needed it for the kids for football, so of course we agreed. And we're working with them to maintain that field. That's our old carnival grounds, by the way. That entire site. That's if you were around here 25 years ago, you would have gone and carnival every July and have a good time. But subsequent to that, we haven't had one in a long time. We tried to have one, thanks to the 75th Anniversary Committee, a chicken barbecue, which worked out really well. It brought a lot of people in. And we did it just in time with no COVID or anything like that, so it was really good. So, but this is all our carnival grounds. And if the people that are really old that remember that this is actually was Army property back in the missile days, back in the 60s.
There are people that say there's still missiles. Anyway, I used to live down in that area, but I thought, football field, I don't remember a football field.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's relatively new. Anybody got any other comments?
Just one more question. Kevin, you mentioned that the building, the new building is 20 by 30, the footprint. Do you know about how tall it is, or exactly how tall it is?
Yeah, approximately, well, it's eight, roughly eight to nine feet per story. It's three stories.
Okay.
So we're looking at probably, you know, in the neighborhood, around 32 feet, 35 feet, around there. And just so clarification is that it's 20 by 30, but the actual stair, the fire escape stair on that south end sticks out about 12 feet, so.
Okay.
It looks like it's more the end of an apartment building than a townhouse.
Well, we have to fit it in there.
Yeah, no, I mean, it looks, I think that's an appropriate thing.
Yeah.
Anyway, Mike, do you have any comments in town, in staff?
No, no, as Kevin pointed out to the commission, I've been working with Kevin on this. He has secured approval with the Conservation Commission previously to this meeting. So this is his last stop on his way to, for construction. You have a staff report from me. Basically, it meets zoning setback, location, et cetera, with just two conditions of approval. One, just the administrative zoning permits required. Two is that if there's any changes in grading out there, that staff is authorized to act on your behalf, just so it doesn't slow Kevin down in the field.
Okay.
Again, is there any concern about the, you know, I don't know, water, chemicals, whatever, that would be used in firefighting training?
We don't use any chemicals in this particular building. We don't use foam in that building. And, you know, that's, you know, obviously, we don't, we're restricted on using anything that contains PFOS in it right now. And we're actually looking at a lot of our inventory, you know, what we have of any legacy foam is being safeguarded right now. And we're actually awaiting and working with the state and Environmental Protection to come up with a replacement program, which they just came up with a replacement foam that is safe for the environment. And we are looking at that, as well as coming up with an idea of how are they going to retrieve the old foam? And how can we safely get rid of it? So we're in the middle of doing that. And certainly, I know I'm a little bit off track of the building, but I, you know, I know I, we addressed this back several years. And we're fully aware, we're as concerned as everyone else in the use of PFOS. So the only thing that we would do, if anything, is it be a PFOS-free, Class A foam, is what they're called. We don't use it, and quite frankly, it's just so expensive to use for training. And we don't see the value of the training environment, because of the fires are so small. You know, usually you can use a Class A product, like in other towns, we use a Class A product in every fire with very large fire. And they end up with a lot of, you know, a lot of foam everywhere, but it's the Class A foam, not PFOS. So other than that, like I said, that's the only thing I said. The other stuff is sheet drainage back from the asphalt. We'll calculate the sheet drainage into that area.
Okay.
Okay. Are any other towns going to be using this facility?
It's, I can say that there could be. We've had towns use our old facility. We do allow it. If, especially if we respond, if we ask them to respond to a fire here, we want to be able to work with them. We want them to be just as trained as we are. So there are times where we have Avon comes in, and they, they'll train here. Bloomfield has come in, and quite frankly, both of them have their own burn facility. But a lot of it has to do with training with us, you know? Granby has come in, and they've used it on occasion. But they'll end up going also to the state in Windsor Locks. So that's.
Okay.
Okay, are we ready for a motion? For questions? Bruce, you got attachment, eh?
Yes, I do. Let me just point out, though, I'll present the motion as Mike drafted it with one change, that the very last few words at the bottom of the thing refer to the requests for minor change, is what it's referring to, are to be made in writing to staff prior to implementation. What we wanted to say is made in writing to staff and approved prior to implementation. So that's what I'll, the way I'll read it. I know that's what Mike intended, so here we go. I make this motion to approve the application 21-03 of the Simsbury Fire District, Honorary Applicant for a Site Plan Amendment for Construction of a New Training Building, Ceremonial Flag Burning Area for the VFW, and Other Site Improvements at the Property Located at 251 Hot Meadow Street, Zone R40. The Site Plan Approval is Subject to the Following Conditions. Number one, an administrative zoning permit is required for proposed construction. Item two, the Zoning Commission authorizes staff to approve minor modifications to site grading, landscaping, drainage, or lighting on their behalf. Said requests are to be made in writing to staff and approved prior to implementation. End of motion.
Thank you. Second by Mike Doyle. Any further comments?
Actually, I do have another question. So there is a, there is a flag pole back there now?
Yes.
No.
What was that, no?
No, there will be.
Okay, I thought I saw that it was a replacement. And I remember we had one out front near the parking lot that someone donated in memory of one of the kids.
I think this one says removable is the note on it.
Yeah, it's a removable pole, so it doesn't, the only time we put it in there is when they're burning it, so that it doesn't become stolen or whatever. Because it just, you know, it's not gonna be used that often. So we can just remove it, and it's gonna be almost probably a telescopic pole that will go up and down. And we just put it in the ground during the ceremony of the flag burning, and then remove it once that is completed.
Okay, thank you.
Are there comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstain? Okay, it carries six, nothing. Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for yours.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Next order of business is preliminary discussion with Rich Coria, Adam Westtaber and Philip Doyle for Zone Change Request for 332 Hope Creek Street.
Thank you, thank you, yep. Can you hear me? Yep, am I on?
Yes, we can hear you, Rich.
There we go. Thank you all for listening to us tonight. And Bruce, I heard you before the meeting started complimenting Mike on his presentation to the chamber the other morning. I would like to echo those sentiments. He did a really incredible job. And also, it's an incredible job done by this commission to look forward, to approve some of the projects in there, to help replace the grand list with the loss of the heart. That was devastating to us as a community. And, you know, this commission has stepped up, and, you know, we're looking at a 2.9% increase over the, you know, the past year. And I think that's a real compliment to everybody, you know, on this call. So, you know, if somebody's been around for a long time, thank you all very much. But we're here for a different reason. Through a, you know, I find people in unusual ways, and I get introduced by mutual contacts all the time. And I was told that I should speak to Adam, who happened, who was looking to possibly put in some type of a brewery in the, you know, in Simsbury. I called Adam up, and I said, "Boy, I've been thinking about where I can put you for a brewery. You know, I have a whole bunch of places in the center of town. We can look here, here, here." And he said to me, "No, Rich, you missed my point. The name of my brewery is Paddle Creek. I want to be on the river." And I said, "Well, I know I can get you near the river, but let's see if I can get you on the river." So in my memory bank, I went back some 18 years ago, when I had a conversation with Mike Yakamore Sr. And I said, "You know, Mike, you know, someday I'll be calling you up and saying, 'We can incrementally increase the tax base here on this property with the use that would be nice to the community, keep the character of the house, but incrementally, we're increasing, you know, the taxes for the town of Simsbury, and have an attraction for visitors and others.'" And we think that we have that with Adam. He's only been in Simsbury 20 years now, so he's still a bit of a newcomer. And, but when we were talking with him, he told Phil and I that when they opened up his brewery over in East Hartford, it was always with the intention, "It should be in Simsbury, but we'll go to East Hartford and get established, and then make our way over here to, you know, make our way back into Simsbury." We met, I took him on a tour. We liked the site, we came to a deal relatively quick. And Adam, if you want to say just a couple of words, and then we can turn it over to Phil.
Adam there?
Or Phil, you can say a few words.
Yeah. I had sent to Mike, Philip Doyle, from LADA over on West Street. And I had sent to Mike Lyden, and Mike, I think you distributed some of the package I sent around to the commission members?
Yes.
But everybody, everybody has seen what we're thinking about. There's a piece of property that's owned by the Lord Christensen and his wife, successors to Mike Yakamore. It's the seven and a half acres that wraps around the Abigail's property. It has frontage on both 185 and on Hot Meadow Street. And I sent you a couple of pictures. There's a house on the property, and there is a barn. And Adam's idea has been to rehab the barn, might need a little expansion, but rehab the barn and use the barn for a brewery, a boutique brewery. And the setting is lovely, it's a gorgeous location. The site is both zoned R1 and floodplain. Much of the site below the house and below the barn is floodplain. And so this would be a relatively, I just, Adam was just knocking on my window here. So the, there's not a lot of room on the property to expand buildings, that type of thing. So this seemed to be a nice fit, relatively low-key. And so we were looking at potentially extending the B1 zone that is on the Abigail's property, bring that into this site, because the B1 would allow us a retail use. And under retail, when you look carefully at the regs, it allows the sale of a product, and you could have, I think, up to five people who are involved in the manufacturing. Because you have a couple of, you have your brewers there, the people who make the beer. So it would be to sell the beer, have, the concept would be have a tasting room, and to produce the beer. So the, it seemed to be a nice concept. The floodplain zone would remain the floodplain zone, but we changed the overall zoning so that we could have the brewery and the tasting room. I think I put in my email to Mike, would probably end up a restaurant. You know, there's nothing really that exactly fits it, but we probably call that a restaurant. So that's the idea. And we were, wanted to informally just test the idea with you all, to see if we're going in the wrong direction, if there are major objections, if we should not go in this direction, that, the, what, you know, what have we missed? That's, that was our intention, right? And I think I have to go open the door to let Adam in.
Yeah, Phil, can you let me in?
Oh, God. My partner locked the door. Oh, my goodness. Hey, guys, how are you? This is Adam.
Good, welcome.
So, I'm trying to shut my phone off, we got an echo here.
There's a greenhouse on the east side of the property?
Yeah, can you get, if you can turn that off, Adam? Yeah, there is, what's happening in the property now, when you look at the air photo that I had sent, the larger air photo, there are fields that extend from Abigail's toward the river. At the moment, we'd like to just leave those as farmed fields. I'm not sure if it's Wade, or if it's Roski, or who might be using those fields. Good, thanks, Mike. But over on the right-hand side, eastern side of the property, is our fields. There is a small greenhouse that is right behind the parking lot and above the pond. Mike, can you, you push your, take your cursor and hit the greenhouse, right there? And that would remain, I'm assuming, and Nord might know this, but I'm assuming that that greenhouse is related to the farming operation that's occurring. And then there's the White House up in the northwest corner. And the barn is down wedged into the corner of the property behind Abigail's and the parking lot that's associated, I think, with the daycare and with Abigail's out back. And uh, the, the parking lot that's associated, I think, with the daycare and with Abigail's out back.
Yeah, I'm curious, is there any kind of issue with having a brewery so close to a daycare? Like, is, is there any kind of issue that, that would cause?
I don't know, it's an interesting question. We've looked into it and, and we haven't seen anything in the, in the zoning regs. I had wondered that in relation to Abigail's. Have Abigail's in the, the, the daycare and they, they serve hard liquor. And uh, the presumption I had, we have some more research to do, but the presumption I have made is that. If Abigail's and, and the daycare can have that kind of proximate relationship, then um, likely we can uh, uh, do the same. Before we go much further, we have to take a look at if there's any state regs that, that would have that. Kind of research.
And, and Phil, can I fill, fill in on the uh, the agricultural part there?
Yep.
Okay, um, at present, Bill Walsh, who used to run Town Farm Berry at the north end of town, when he was no longer there, he uh. He's been renting those fields and that barn from us for six, seven years. Six or seven years now. Um, about a year ago, year and a half ago, he took a job at Cornell University and he's no longer actually. Farming the fields. He has sort of let, and we collectively have sort of let uh, Marshall Epstein or Rosedales use those. For the last two seasons.
Okay.
And, you know, depending on what Adam has in mind, I'm sure that um. They would love to continue to use them as, as long as it works for whatever Adam has, has in mind there.
Yep, well, good, we've got a relationship with Marshall. That's good, he's a good guy.
Yep.
That's, that was Nord, in case people didn't know. Nord, uh, Christensen did call in.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I, I didn't realize I wasn't, I was muted and I had unmuted myself halfway through that, I apologize.
Some other questions or, or do you have, did you want to describe that further? Are you ready for some other questions? Cause I, I, I just want to be uh, clear about the parking and, at uh. Abigail's and as you mentioned, the uh, daycare center. Do they use any of the land that is part of the seven and a half acres or seven point eight acres? I thought there was some sort of, in the summertime or whatever, they were parking, you know, on property they didn't actually own, but had an agreement with the landowner.
As.
They purchased it. You want me to answer that?
Yeah, let me give a preface and then I want you to jump right in.
Okay.
Uh, Mike Glidden, can you, since you have control of the screen, can you uh, uh, draw a, a line? That, that shows the, the land that they purchased, uh, that was purchased a couple of years ago?
Is that it right there? Can you see the box, the square?
Yep.
Nord, am I, am I correct in that area? I'm sorry.
Um, I can't, I'm just on the phone, I can't see, but it was, it's from the, the property line between three thirty-two. And the barn up by the road, if you draw us up. It was sort of an L-shaped piece. It went a couple hundred feet east and a hundred and something feet uh, north.
Yep.
It actually sort of wraps over behind the barn. It's, it's where they're, where they extended their existing park gear.
Yeah, Mike, Nord, I think Mike has got that almost entirely correct. And the only difference to, Bruce, to answer your question would be. Uh, it, it projects down uh, about forty feet wide or so to Route one eighty-five along that outer row of parking. So as uh, Nord said, it's an L and um, because I have also remembered over the years, people parking out in that field. So.
I do for sure.
Abigail bought that, that land, put in some parking and there's no other relationship. I do, in the back of my mind, I have wondered. If I hadn't seen people parking out there on busy weekends. And that might be the, be the case. But, but we don't have anything that documents that.
No, there's, there, there have been a few cars parked there occasionally when they're really, really busy. On a section of the frontage on one eighty-five that we still own, that we did not sell to them. And there's no formal agreement. It just kind of happened. Trying to be a decent neighbor, realizing they could stand a little extra parking when they were absolutely swamped. I just kind of kept my mouth shut and left it alone. Um. You know, hopefully, again, there'll be a relationship between Adam and Abigail's to some degree and. There'll be some sort of shared parking or resolution to some of that at some point down the road.
Right, we, we anticipate the same.
Beg your pardon?
We anticipate the same thing, Nord, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I, I think it's, you know, it'll, it'll probably work itself out.
Yep.
Well, from the description, the concept of your proposal or your, your vision, you don't really need anything out past where that pond is. Anyway, right, okay. And my, my other question is about, if I understood this correctly, the large white house that's closest to. Uh, Meadow Street. Um, that's staying. Your intention would be to keep that. And then you're, you'd remodel the building that's behind it into the, to the south. It's a white building. Is that the barn that you're referring to?
The barn, when you take a look at the pictures that I sent over.
Yeah.
The barn is a classic New England red uh, barn. It's the.
Oh, it's up closer to Route ten, right, okay, got it.
That's the barn.
Okay.
One we'd like to use for uh, the brewery. Might need an addition, uh, might, might come in this direction, you know, toward uh, uh, toward the gable end, out the gable end. But that's the barn that we'd like to use. And you can see the, it's just such a lovely location that um. Would seem to be appropriate for this kind of small-scale use.
Is that barn within the flood zone? Even, I recognize the whole property needs to be treated for building purposes as if it's the flood zone, but I wondered if that.
Barn is.
Picture. Flood zone, actually, the line is.
The, the Bruce, the flood zone comes uh, the flood zone is sort of parallel to uh, Hot Meadow Street. Just below the barn. It comes.
Okay.
Uh, just below it. Now, the floor elevation of the barn is about four or five feet higher than the um, than the flood zone, which is lovely. It's great for us because we don't have to worry about those, those issues. Anything that we would do in terms of an expansion, if we ever. Uh, came to you for that, for special permit site plan, all of that would be outside of the um.
I, I think um, when Abigail's came in for their bathroom addition, a little bit of it was in the flood zone, wasn't it, Mike?
Yeah, so that, that area, that, that flood plain kind of, as it goes to one eighty-five, it creeps closer to Hot Meadow Street and it actually. Uh, south of Abigail's, it crosses the street towards Pheasant Way.
Oh, wow.
Um, but this area, we checked the topo based on the two thousand and nineteen topo, uh, Phil's correct. The barn itself, i- it's, it's out of the flood plain by a few feet. Um, so they, he should be safe from a flood plain management standpoint.
Yeah, I would say from a zoning standpoint, that whole, those three properties there should all be, be one. We've got another R forty in there and I don't know what's another one. Um, but from, you know, one eighty-five up to um.
Mitchell's.
Yeah, but I'm trying to think of what the street is there. Winslow Place should all be B one.
You know, we'll take a look at that. If Mike could put up the zoning map to.
The other properties are Yakamore Properties, if I'm not mistaken, right, Nord?
Uh, one of them is. The next one north is.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Mike, Michael Yakamore, my brother-in-law. And then the next one north of that is uh, the Littles, John Little. His wife, uh, and then you get Ri- uh, River View.
Okay.
Where we, we're looking at the zoning map that we, we sent over and there is a B1 that shows up sort of to the top of the drawing. That's where River View is, but River View owns right down to, and right down to the river. And it, it, their property runs down to that point where you see the R forty uh, zone uh, uh, written right near the river. And, and Mike Yakamore Junior owns that, that funny shaped triangular piece that runs down to the river and then back out to Hot Meadow Street. Uh, the Littles own that small piece that's between the B1 and, and where the, where it's chosen, that purple kind of color and the. Mike Junior property. And it's, it's interesting, there is an old landlocked piece. That, that is immediately to the site we're looking at, that, to, to north. And that looks like it's about five acres or so. That's also owned by the River View. It's all flood plain. And it's, it's mostly wetlands down in there. But, but that's also River View property. So the, the, it's a limited property ownership. Um, uh, as the, the vice chair was just pointing out in this area. Um, and I think Rich has had conversations with, with everyone about extending the B-zone to the entire area. But we weren't. We, we felt uncomfortable about, about making that. That large an application for us. We didn't know if that was appropriate or not.
Yeah, Mike, I couldn't, what would it take for the zoning commission to actually talk about doing that? Would we just have to get approval from the, the owners?
Yeah, we'd have to first notify the owners that were, were investigating the potentially extending the B1 zoning, zone, zoning line district to encompass their property. Cause in fairness to them, they should have a heads up that this, this, that would be coming down the road.
So I actually, from looking at that map where the R forty is right now, actually that should be B1 as well.
Yeah, because that's all, that's all River View property.
Yeah, but it is all B1.
It's B1.
Yeah, so just the three odd shaped, well, the, the real odd shaped product. One is an R forty.
Right.
And you got the Littles and then the um, the landlocked one. You know, from a, you know, otherwise it looks very awkward to have an R forty in the middle of the B1 zone.
Yes.
Um, and it would be ideal to actually have that whole, and we, and we did a, a, um, charrette a few years ago on Wheatog.
We did.
And I don't remember if we talked about rezoning that, but that would have made sense at the time.
Yeah. Kevin, I believe we did, yes. I, I can't totally speak for my brother-in-law, but I believe that he would be open to that. Um, my guess is he would want to continue to live there. Uh, he's lived there for an awfully long time and I think he kind of wants to live out his life there. But I don't think he would object to uh, making that change. So that would just leave the Littles.
Yeah.
Little's house on Waverly Place, really?
Winslow.
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 Yep.
Yeah, so there's, Nord, does your brother live in the, in the Winslow House? The, the, the.
He, he lives in the big blue one.
The blue one, that's the, yeah, that's Reverend Winslow's. And the one we're talking about at, at the, the property under discussion is actually the Reverend Crofton's, Reverend Croft's house. That's the whole reason that the. The monument across the street, the Civil War monument faces that house.
Yep, well, there's, there's, there's two reasons it faces the houses. One is that they couldn't move it when they got it off the railcar, so they dropped it there. That's the story I heard. If, probably, some of you must remember this, but Winslow Place was actually part of Route ten at one point, where you used to get trestle there.
I remember well, I used to work at the gas station there when the mobile station was on Canal Street, yeah.
Yep, you went around the corner, you went up and over the trestle and came down by the gas station and then you turned left on Canal Street, not Hot Meadow Street. So, anyway.
Yep.
Yes. Okay, so we, anybody have any real objection to this? Is there a, uh, seems like a, a good use to me, but um.
Yeah, how much parking would we be required for this?
We really, at this point, don't, Kevin, don't really know. We, we haven't even taken it that far to uh, to put anything together. So I'm not sure if we're looking at. Twenty cars or thirty cars or forty cars. It just, it, it, we, we're just starting the process right now.
Okay, well, we, we, you know, poor Simsbury has been kind of left out of this brewery explosion, you know, we, we don't have one in town.
Yes, we do. Oh, no, it's a Navon, I lied. It's a Navon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right over the line.
And listen, you have a comment?
Can I ask a question? I know I'm not seated tonight, but I'm just curious about something.
So go ahead.
Okay, so um, across from Hot Meadow, there are still a bunch of residential parcels there. I know there's that one big Victorian that's for sale. Across from Abigail's and a little bit south, but there is a whole swath of residential properties across Hot Meadow from the barn. Um, I just want to make sure that we're considering the impact of them of one half of the, one side of Hot Meadow becoming a business zone. That's all.
Any other comments?
Well, just the other side also includes that small park where the Dr. White Memorial Fountain is. So there's the fountain, the monument. There's a house being built in between right now.
Mm-hmm.
Or the land's being cleared anyway.
Yeah.
One of those. Go ahead. One of those fountains the town was paying for the water for.
No, the Historical Society does.
Really?
Yeah.
It used to be the town budget.
The trustee for that. Yeah, it, it costs a lot of money every year to run that.
Used to be the town budget. Anyway, any other comments for, for these people? I think it's, my ideas, my thoughts, a good idea.
I don't have for the same.
Pardon?
I, I would just add that I, uh, this is Nord, I did have a conversation with Ira Peck a hundred years ago, um, regarding this exact. Uh, scenario and he thought it was an absolutely great idea. Um. I had a couple of different people approach me, neither, neither one of them were really. Established enough to, to make it happen, whereas Adam certainly seems that he's, he could, he could make this work. So. That's, that's kind of why we're here, I think.
But the consensus is, well, I, I guess I don't want to announce a consensus yet, but I think it's a good idea, but I'm anxious that at such an early stage that. We, you know, it doesn't sound like you need any exceptions or text amendments or anything like that to make this work. And, and anything along those lines will make it more complicated, but the concept seems to me to be a good fit down there, but. There are some concerns, including what about the people across the street?
People across the street and the Conservation Commission.
Pardon me?
I said the Conservation Commission will have to weigh in as well, so. It's not a slam dunk, but it seems like a.
Right.
An appropriate thing. So what more do you want from us?
No, I think, I think we've, we don't need any, any more. I think uh, we were looking for some general guidance. If you had said. No, this, this doesn't fit with, with what we've envisioned for Wheatog, that we, we would then step back and, and, and not take it any further, but. But to move forward, we need to start looking at, in detail. We're, we're certainly aware of the houses on the other side of the street. We all know that Wheatog was identified in the P O C D as, as a small village gateway to, to Simsbury. But the master plan for it never was, was forthcoming. So, so that we're, we've got a hole here that, that we're uh, in, uh. Sort of incrementally starting to, to fill. And from the conversation we're having tonight, it seemed to me that. This easterly side of Hot Meadow might end up going more towards commercial uses. If the B1 zone is expand, expand, expanded, the, the westwardly side is going to stay as, as residential. And we've got to make sure that transition is appropriately handled, that it's, and that's why. We've seen this site as a nice, low-key. Uh, we don't envision anything up on the road, everything being pulled away from the road and, and my expectation would be. Uh, uh, I think, uh, you know, we're looking at eventually at parking. All of that's down the hill and probably would be in the flood plain, like, like the, the, the Abigail's. Like like the the Abigail's parking is, so that you're not changing the landscape. Along Hot Meadow Street. You want to have the houses that are there remain as protected as 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 they are now. And that that's sort of where our minds are going and. We wouldn't take it any further if you had if you said to us, no, this Phil, this is a stupid idea, you know, go away. But um I think the guidance you've given us suggests that if we if we're careful. We might be able to do a a good job here.
I think everybody agrees with that.
Yeah, well, sir.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much for coming to us.
Thank you. We really appreciate the time.
Hi.
Bye.
Next order of business is a general commission business. We we've been talking about my um several things. One is the fixing of our sign regs, which I think is still with the town attorney. And um the looking at our commercial business areas. With the office space that they can install, trying to see what our. What our regs say and what other people are doing to try to encourage productive use of those of those square feet. Mike, any? Do you have any comments on this?
No, I I think well, one, the sign regs, Bob D will get me his comments on Friday, he said. Um, and and I think that maybe I will say, ask him that the commission would like to see him at at your next meeting. To not only see this, see the the final work that he discussed when he was before this commission, but more importantly, to. Kind of get that conversation going to the point where once if we're comfortable, we can put the sign regs to a pub to a public hearing. Um, with the definitions he wanted to add, et cetera, and a few other changes. Um, as for the the industrial zone regs, um, you have a, I know it's it's a large document I sent you from comparing the other towns. Their industrial zones and what they allow, what they don't versus our regs. Um, I think what Dave brings up is is really should should be the primary focus. Is that we have some office space that we may have to get creative on how to refill how to fill it fill it up. Because I don't think the same office users will be going back. Um, so. You know, keeping an eye on some of the uses such as, you know, is it worth having the discussion? Do you want to include retail or other similar uses in the commercial zones? I mean, the industrial zones, I'm sorry. Um, and it's really.
Also found, we also found Kevin pointed out a couple of places where we seem to be inconsistent.
Yeah.
In the tables, and I was looking at that a while ago, and it didn't seem. Inconsistent. It was both site planned in both cases, so maybe I was looking at the wrong area. Where was it, Kevin, that you?
Well, I remember it was one like we didn't allow a recreational gym, but we allowed a church.
It was warehouses and I thought it was one where we allowed warehouses on a site plan. And then there was another area where we required a special exception. And then we allowed a truck terminal in a warehouse. By site plan, which seemed a little a little not right. But when I looked at that, they're both site plans now under. The industrial table there. Is there two tables there, Mike, that I I missed one?
Actually, I'm missing where where is that table? It's which?
Page thirty. Page thirty is where the table is that I wasn't getting.
Yeah. And I. I thought our my memo was still here unless it's under regulations. So I was just pulling that up.
Yeah, I think it's the last one.
So when we when we did our our rewrite or our kind of reorg last year, um, you know, one of the things of the industrial zones, we didn't tackle the industrial zones like we. As an in-depth review, some of the changes that 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 the chairman was discussing earlier, we probably can handle. I can go through again and 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 write up what the conflict is and what how it should be um. Uh, rectified. But while I while I do that, do we want to talk about adding uses too?
I think so. I think we were. Trying to find um something that would fit in those in those places. They were really buildings that were. Could be converted to other to other functions and other uses. You know, apartment buildings, for example, they're refitting rehabbing things in Hartford. Where they're going from office buildings to uh to residential. And the the need for affordable housing is also something that maybe if we permitted people to. Uh, convert office space to affordable housing, that would kill two birds with one stone. Anybody have any thoughts on that? Not a flinch in the.
I think it's a good thing for our commission to have that on our radar about being proactive to to do things to create that.
So maybe um. And I don't want to drag this out beyond too far at the the next meeting. Could I I can I can take a few of the things that are other towns or what I provided you on that list? And plug in a few ideas for uses if it makes sense, along with rectifying sort of the conflict that we have in that chart. Um, as as Kevin kind of pointed out, how warehouses are permitted as a right in one thing, and then the next line, they're specially permitted. Um, and draft a proposed change to the I one and I two regs.
I think that would be good because we've got in your document, I think sixty some pages and. Getting six people's results, sixty pages is not.
Yeah, it's not the way to approach it. Yeah.
No, I I'll I'll take a stab at it, and then if the commission doesn't like it, we could change or add things. So I'll have that for the next meeting.
That's a lot easier to deal with and.
And I apologize.
We should probably spell out things, Mike, like, you know, breweries and um and um. Even the the distilleries.
Distilleries.
You know, and and breweries, I think, you know, there is that more opportunity, and I guess we just need to look at what trends are out there for. New things that, you know, weren't around when the regs were originally written.
So so this may be off topic, but not really on the same mindset, Kevin, is do we want to talk about recreational marijuana too?
Well, we have that as a.
You have medical.
It's a it's an S E right now, so.
Yeah.
That's medical. Isn't it?
Yes.
Recreational.
There's nothing else right now.
I mean, it's just, there's only medical, but just, you know, in the possibility that the General Assembly says. We're going to allow recreation. Do you want to plan for that too?
Well, the governor's proposal is it wouldn't take effect until twenty twenty two, so I I don't think we need to move that to the top of the list frequently.
Okay, no, I'm just I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean, that's only my opinion, but yeah.
Are you talking manufacturing or um or retail?
Both.
Yeah.
Just food for thought. It's not something that could that could be the focus.
It probably wouldn't be an idea to at least consider it, can you know, if we're already looking at other business cases, I mean. Rather than having to revisit it again, I'm you know. That's like I said, not top of the list, but. Bad idea.
I think Bruce is right.
What the options would be.
You know, if we if we start getting into that area, we're going to get a lot of involvement with the community.
Most times, other things are already on our agenda.
Maybe it distracts from the ultimate purpose of getting more businesses.
Yeah, I'll I'll stick to the the industrial regs and and Kevin, the distillery breweries. How's that?
That's good.
That sounds good.
I think we're going to be getting plenty of attention from the community anyhow, given the um push for statewide changes, so.
Yeah. You know, also, uh, other other recreational uses, dance studios, those sorts of things. It seemed like we had people coming to us for things that maybe they should be able to to do without a problem.
Well, it reminds me, though, of the conversation that goes back, you know, ten years, more than ten years, probably over a form-based code that. We kind of we we locked in a commitment on that for the center code, but not for the rest of the town. And and later went to that concept for the area where the Hartford was, but. The underlying principle is that you you design and build for a particular. Uh, form so that it fits the area, that it fits the community and that sort of thing, but it's less important as to what the use is. And so, um, you know, there's a lot more flexibility in terms of mixing and matching with uses that might fit in a certain place. I think you can see that in the center code that we have a litany of descriptive sort of. Scenarios, you know, what's permitted in these various areas and certain definitions, and I think some of the work might have been done for us already. We could just pull from there, but. You know, nothing's all is is ever easy. But um. Yeah, so if a building like the dancing uh at the building that used to be the marijuana factory, you know. Nobody had any problem with the dancing and the dance studio going in the marijuana factory. It makes sense. I mean, it's like, why do we? You know, is there any angst over that at all? Because there are a lot of things that would fit in a building. We just need to write them on a list and. I don't know if there's a way to shortcut that by. Offering, you know, language like, you know. That provides guidance and not a prescriptive list of what things fit. Anyway.
It's hard because there are certain things that become lightning rods.
For sure.
Yep, um, you know, so another couple. Opportunities, I guess, would be, well, one would be the dance studios, you know, even a theater. You know, I'm not sure why you couldn't put a theater into one of these uh old office buildings or something and um. Uh, even some of the storage stuff, you know, a lot of the office, the old warehouse, the old, uh, they're actually factory buildings are being converted to. Indoor storage facilities. And you know, and that would work in a in a couple of places. So, you know, I don't think we should say no to it. I mean, now it says no.
Right, it's gonna be. You know, if the building's already there, especially. It's just, you know, conversion and trying to preserve the exterior if it's possible.
Yeah, and we already saw that built up and then across from Big Y there or where Turp Circuit used to be. You know, they they got kicked out so that they can convert that to.
Oh, right.
You know. But, you know, some of those. The kinds that are happening, you know, I guess as you look at other towns, we can identify some of those.
Performing spaces fall under the same category as theater? So I just saw somebody who was looking for space for, you know, like performing spaces, you know, where they can gather and. Practice their instruments or practice, but outside of their own home.
Down at at um, what is it Yakamore's place, you they have the U Heart. The U Heart uh has.
Yeah, right.
Dance studio. And they didn't come to us for anything there, which is.
Where is it?
It's it's in.
It was more square.
Where the temporary library was. Oh, yeah.
In the back and below, there's there are some uh soundproof rooms for piano practice.
Really?
And they didn't do us for it, so that, you know, I think that's fine. But Mike used to be in favor of doing those kinds of things without telling us first anyway.
Well, I was thinking about Mike this afternoon when I went by this three twenty two Hot Meadow just to see which buildings it was, and. I see the sign out front declaring that it's a uh music, it's a art studio and gallery. I'm not sure, you know, and that's a residential zone. We all know, we just talked about it, but.
It got it got permission to be a film studio some years ago. We gave it, I don't know whether there's a special exception or what, but.
I don't know either, but I don't I suspect it doesn't fit our requirements for home-based business. I'm I'm not sure the artist lives there, but if she doesn't.
No, this was this was a film studio. Somebody was gonna put.
Yeah.
A movie making in there. But it never happened.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else?
I think all those would be appropriate, you know, a video studio or anything uh. In in those business areas.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, I will uh I'll take a stab at it and have it for the fifteenth. The last thing I have just for the commission is a follow up on our our conversation a while ago with um. Uh, Dino Nobel and the proposed fuel cell. Um, I have some revised plans. I'm going to share them on my screen right now, just quick. Um, they took the commission's comments to heart and. Hopefully, it's about to load. Can everyone see the plans?
Yep.
It should have been in your the Dropbox. They um are proposing some evergreens and some arborvitae along the perimeter of the proposed fuel cell. So they're gonna they're gonna attempt to put some vegetation in there to screen it.
Okay, this is the the one off of Drake Hill.
Yes, yes.
The other we didn't care about.
Woodland is interior to the site. There's no there's no visual impact to any.
It's way interior, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, this looks better better than what's there now even.
Mm hmm. So.
Now, is north is north the bottom of the screen here?
North, it would be the top. So as I scroll up, that's Drake Hill. So you're looking, it's kind of the back here. Uh, the plant is just below. Uh, the bottom of my screen. Okay.
Who did this? Who did this layout?
Uh, Bloom Energy is doing the layout for them.
Okay. A lot of typos in this.
Yes.
Maybe you made them nervous, Mike, with your feedback about this.
They turned it around quick, so I'll just leave it at that.
They don't want complications.
So because you're you're I I I sent a letter and you're on your behalf to the Siding Council, which then the Siding Council directed them to. Address the town before you come back to us.
Oh, that's good.
So you guys, so you've influenced the process. I wanted to show it to you. If if you're okay with this, I'm going to send a letter saying our concerns have been met with the revised plans.
Yeah, I know. We appreciate their.
Yeah, it's nice.
Working with us.
Okay.
We should make a motion to that effect, right?
Good neighbors.
We should make a motion to that effect and get it in our record. Somebody want to make a motion?
I can't.
Nobody?
Uh, well, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we send a letter to um. Dino Nobel that we appreciate their efforts and uh. And and their willingness to work with us in providing a landscape plan for the fuel cell plant off of Drake Hill Road.
And confirm that it's satisfactory. It meets our. Concerns.
Yeah, what do you said?
Okay.
Have a second?
I'll say. I'll say.
And second, and second.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Final discussion. All in favor?
I.
Close. Okay. It passes, so Mike, it goes in the minutes.
Thank you.
Please.
I I will send that letter out. Um, that's all I have for tonight. Um, if anyone who's joining us for the land, uh, the Connecticut Bar Association. Training on on Saturday, you should have received your books by now.
I did. I did. Yeah, I got mine as well.
Okay, either Tom or or myself delivered it, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah.
And your Laura delivered yours today.
She did. Actually, I I said I was gonna pick it up and I opened my front door to go up to Town Hall and it was right there.
Perfect.
So I sent her a thank you.
Okay, excellent.
So.
Dave, before we. Are you done, Mike?
Yes, yes.
Before we wrap up, Dave, I I was going to mention earlier and it slipped my mind that. In the last several weeks, I've been sort of monitoring what's happening in Canton on the proposal for the. And uh, there have been several occasions where the planning director over there um is trying to get the attention or get onto the agenda. Uh, reconsider further consideration of Airbnb. And I just wanted to remind anyone that we have unresolved uh our Airbnb issues in Simsbury and it's there's no there's no one working on it to my knowledge. And it's, there's no, there's no one working on it to my knowledge right now. So whatever's causing it to come back to them, and that's the way he keeps phrasing it, it's coming back, it's coming back. One day that'll be, you know, something for us to take up again because. The strategy for getting it resolved hasn't, hasn't resulted in. Any resolution, so it, it'll come back for us.
Wasn't that being handled by the selectmen or something? Wasn't that?
The selectmen set up a, a group of people to review it, including Bruce. And they met once and then they didn't meet again. And Eric told me it was because of the COVID constraint. It couldn't be. But I think it's time to start thinking about it again.
Yeah, enough workarounds have been created on other issues that it might be time to think of a workaround there, but.
And I'm not sure that, and Bruce's, Bruce's report on that was that. What I, what I remember is that the people in that group didn't really understand. The issue and, and the relationship between zoning and the, and the. Board of Selectmen. And I've always felt that we should permit, should put something in our zoning regs that permits. Airbnb, subject to license by the Board of Selectmen. And leave that there and then that will force them to move. But the town, town attorney didn't want us to do that. A year ago. But if we were to do that. I think that would, would push, put a light, light a fire under the select. They probably don't want to hear that from us.
Well, why don't we put that on the agenda for our next meeting?
I was speaking with Jackie this week and she's well aware of the issues and she's on the subcommittee. And so the two selectmen are Jackie and, and Chris Peterson. So they, Jackie certainly knows the issues. And so she, they've talked to Mike about resurrecting the committee.
Oh, yeah.
We're, we're actually supposed to have a, a phone call on Wednesday to catch up and. Talk, talk about reviving meetings for that working group. So Bruce, thank you for bringing that up tonight because it's timely. Cause I will also say this was brought up at the zoning commission meeting to say the zoning wants to know what's the status of the working group. It's time to start working as the COVID restrictions are being loosened. We need to, we need to move.
Well, the other thing was that we had some agreement, but I forgot exactly how we call this on this thing. The issue of creating some sort of a catalog of. Of, it, it feels like achievement areas, but where we stand in relation to the imminent discussion about affordable housing. What it is in Simsbury that isn't widely understood or known, that demonstrates that we're not as far off the pace as. Some might suggest.
Well, Bruce, Bruce and I started drafting stuff and we've got some, there is numbers and it's not lost.
Okay, good.
One, one of the things, I did send everybody the New York Times.
Yeah.
Story. And, and the gist of that story is that. We white people aren't capable of understanding that there's racism. And, and so, you know, it's, it's kind of a slap in the face and intellectually. But I think it's good for us to say what we're doing and get it out there because. There are people way out on the one fringe. Who are saying things that I think aren't really true.
Well, I think there's some missing, there's a lack of clarity in terms of the discussion on whether we're. What we've achieved and what we focused on in recent years has been about affordable housing versus low income housing. And they're not really the same issue and what, where we have some recent achievement is more the area of affordable housing. And we had more on the agenda, which will come back, I think, before too long. Although I'm not, I don't want to put, you know, too much ahead of, you know, what, where the Board of Selectmen are. But if, if the issue of purchase of that meadow, meadow, I forgot the name of it, but the housing. The housing development. I, I remember the number being something like eighty houses when there were to be affordable housing. It was a big number.
Yeah.
When the town acquires that property, if that goes forward as open space, that shoots a giant hole.
Yep.
In the plan. So that needs to be, you know, a consideration as discussion moves along or, or becomes more public, I guess.
Well, one of the things I've always been interested in is that, you know, even if we have housing that would otherwise qualify as affordable. But it's just not deed restricted. It doesn't qualify for affordable housing. So, you know, people talk about building affordable housing. Well, what about designating existing things and making, making sure that they meet the structural requirements? But what about designating? What about putting some program together where we already have this affordable housing? Are there some incentives that we can give to the owners currently to, to make themselves officially designated as affordable housing? I, I think that we would see our numbers go up pretty significantly if we could somehow, and I have looked at all the regulations, but if we could somehow segue them.
There is a part of the statute. You can, you can get. Housing that is priced right, as long as the owner is willing to. Commit it to be deed restricted.
You know, that might be something that we could encourage, you know?
But that isn't really very practical, I don't think. And we do know that, that like twenty-five percent of last year's housing sales in Simsbury were under $250,000. That's probably going to go up this year because of the inflation.
Yeah.
But still. The only bill in the legislature was proposed by a Republican that said, we're going to make it strictly on the selling price. And that's not going to go anywhere if it's a Republican proposal. But, you know, I, I think we need to put our story on paper, as Bruce said.
Right, right.
And. And.
So if you're working on that, yeah, bravo.
Working on it.
Going, keep going.
Actually, some of the draft is on the Dropbox.
I think it would also be really interesting for us if we were able to figure out exactly how much of our housing currently exists. That will qualify as affordable housing, but for the fact that it doesn't have a deed restriction, right?
Mike is.
They're driving the conversation. Okay, good.
Mike is getting, he's asked for the information from our GIS where we can get a histogram of housing assessed values. By $10,000 or whatever they are. And we can produce a, a thing that shows us what we've got.
Right, because they have us focusing on what is designated as deed restriction when the real issue is. Do we have housing that's affordable, right?
Right, exactly, right.
And that's where the Realtors can help us there. That's where it was twenty-five to thirty percent last year was under.
Yeah.
$250,000, but none of it, you know, qualified as, you know, under the state standard.
Right now, they're defining the conversation. We can redefine that conversation.
Right, but you also remember, so, so you're, the, that, those properties that were sold under $250,000 or less. At least since they did not have a deed restriction, that's why they weren't. However, let's just say that one of those units was purchased by someone who was approved for a USDA loan. Or a Department of Agriculture loan as, as, as their, what the financing structure. Then we get points for those people because they're technically considered making eighty percent of the area minimum income. From an income perspective, now that person in that house gets us some points. But it also speaks to, well, we have, we have an area, we have, we have houses that are available, like you said, like everyone keeps saying. That is affordable. It just matter getting people who can qualify also for the loans too, which would help. On, at least if we just have the strict conversation based on eight thirty G and general state statutes.
And remember, all of these things are related to whether or not you can have a moratorium. On eight thirty developments and, and that sort of is a crazy. Crazy stick in itself.
Yeah.
So anyway, affordable housing and, and. What Simsbury has, I think we need to get that laid out in a document and agree on that. And then see what people come up with in the legislature.
Okay, I got another question though, from our liaison to EDC, because I understand they were talking about rewriting zoning regs. And I was just wondering what the thought was from them.
EDC rewriting the zoning regs?
Well, I'm not quite sure what they're saying here. Maybe Ron can turn him in.
So maybe, I, I could probably help Ron on this. This may be the general assembly in the zoning enabling act rewrite. There's, there's talk that eight dash two, the general state statutes may be revised. And we are waiting to see if, if, if that bill, it's supposed to be filed this week, comes out. There will be mandates on multi-family housing as of right in certain proximity to transit nodes. There will be, there'll be accessory dwelling units will be as of right. No longer subject to local zoning regulations. Everyone will be able to have one. For up to a thousand square feet and staff will have to handle those administratively. There'll be some changes in the, the structure of the regs. There'll be certain things that will be taken away such as. The, the, the comments of the character of the district, what we're hearing that is probably going to be deleted. As a, as a reason for enabling zoning regulations. Along with some other, all other fair housing related changes. But that is, that is coming from the general assembly, at least in a proposal. In a very, very near future.
That's the point of segregation. That's the desegregated Connecticut.
I think it's an important distinction that that is a proposal. And that's one of the reasons we need to have the information we're talking about available, that, look, we have this housing stock. You don't need to impose something if we're doing it already and people need to understand what we're doing, if we are in fact doing it.
Yep.
Kevin, there wasn't any discussion in EDC about us making proposals to rewrite zoning regulations.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay, that's good.
Do you want to?
But zoning can be a powerful economic development tool as well, so.
Okay, I think it's time.
All right, most enjoyed your.
Second.
Second. Bye Diane. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Opposed? Thank you, guys.
Yeah, have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
See you in two weeks.